Kathy's picture come up?
No, that was so funny.
We have to pick us back.
I'm calling to order the special meeting work session for the Board of Education on August 14th, 2017. Jackie, can you call the roll, please?
Amy? Mr. Riceack?
Here.
Mr. Carrubus?
Here.
Ms. Peel?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
And I understand that we're streaming this and also this is available to the public. Our charge today is to come up with a charge for community engagement. If you bear with me, I have a few statements to make before we begin the work. So, for me, over the course of our tenures on the board, whether they be long or whether they be short, I think we've had continued discussion on how to best involve our community in a dialogue in order to identify their needs and priorities. As a group, we've heard and received input from many different groups regarding a variety of issues. Some of the topics have included air conditioning, special education programming, class size, the achievement gap, curriculums, building conditions, technology, and even astroturf fields. So as a board, we know that our charge is to provide the very best education to our students in a fiscally responsible manner. Given that our fiscal resources have been limited by uncertain educational funding, and it may continue to do so in the future, all of us have wondered whether we would be best served from engaging the community in a more comprehensive fashion in order to provide us better direction. As a group, we did ask the administration to seek out resources that would assist us. The administration did provide a presentation from UNICOM ARC. Based on that presentation, we decided that we have several activities to consider. One is to discuss and develop a charge to a consultant and the community to gather information to assist us for future informed decision making. Second thing would be to approve the charge, and three, to approve a consultant to help us implement the charge. Tonight's workshop, our purpose is to complete the first item. We will consider items two and three later. So as we begin this process to develop a charge, we need to look at what an effective charge looks like. So Dr. Sullivan and the administration asked UNICOM ARC to provide several templates of charges and asked us to provide input into our individual perspectives of what a charge should include. After a review, a draft charge was selected, which is up there, and it's also in your packet. I then attempted to compile our input into a draft text in order to ascertain whether it met our needs. So now it's our turn to discuss. So let's begin. And so for me, for simplicity's sake, I would like to focus on the first two headings of the document, which for me, our mission and the community involvement in accomplishing our mission, but let's focus on mission. So from my perspective, our mission and guiding principles must guide our community engagement and really are the foundation for community feedback. So as we look at this, I think no matter what document that we give to our community and give to a consultant to assist us, that we must include our mission and guiding principles. So, open up for discussion. Are we there? Anything else do you want to include for foundational work?
I love how you go into the speech, and then you talk about keeping it simple. It's a nice balance. The only thing about addressing some of these initial points are we have new board members that haven't had an opportunity to go through the policy and reaffirm our mission. So, some of us more veteran board members have already been down this path, and so what might seem familiar to us can be new to others. So that's, I think, an important aspect to put on this.
So are we comfortable with new board members? Where do you sit with this?
Well, I was comfortable with it, actually. I mean, we have been presented with the mission and guiding principles and different material that we were prepared when we were running for office, after we ran for office, and so I thought this was appropriate and consistent with what I had seen before.
Susan, anything to, yeah?
No, I echo what Lori said. I've been cognizant, I've been cognizant of, you know, before becoming elected to the board and the background information that I had to do as we were running, so I'm very comfortable, I'm comfortable, yes.
Mr. Carrubus?
Yeah, we got lots of public questions for.
It's good work. The only difference between running for election is now is you get to change these things. So that's why it's good to look at it and say, does that meet the needs of the district as you see that, and it sounds like it does, so.
You know, I think it will be, and I'm glad we lay this out too, in a concise and manner in which aligns to our goals as a board and what we strive to accomplish as a district. It will be interesting to find out because, you know, engage in relevant and rigorous learning, well, that might mean something different to me than it means to you, Mike, right? So what'll be great is to hear, when we get feedback from our community, what those things mean to them and what they come to expect from our district. So I'm looking forward to hearing that information.
I guess I'm ready to move on if somebody else isn't, just stop me. So the next part of this document that was used as a draft was community involvement in accomplishing our mission. So, and you're there, Jackie, to focus on that?
Yes, I'm at the beginning of that section.
So, I, to me, the bullet points were important. I guess I'm gonna go over them. Build an ongoing process for strengthening communication and collaborative efforts with the community. Define priorities and steps to determine the future health and welfare of the district. To obtain relevant perspectives that build upon, expand, and enhance the previous planning initiatives by the district. Assist the board in hearing and understanding the community's educational beliefs, aspirations, desires, and priorities, and provide a basis for reaching conclusions on issues concerning educational programming, facilities, and resource allocation, and involve the community in planning for the future of the Indian Prairie School District. So, that was concise to me. Other people have had an opportunity to review it, wondering if there's any additions or deletions, and I think that also is a foundation base and sets the tone for the community engagement. Well, this is going way too easy.
I just have a question.
Sure.
We have these, in the second paragraph, we start out with, therefore, I mean, I agree with all the bullet points. I think it's very concise, I like that. Go start with that first. But this is therefore in order to, and then you have all these bullet points, there's no to what. Therefore, in order to, you know, build, define, there's no, there's nothing to end that. Unless, unless the next paragraph where the community engagement charge is the, yeah, is that leading into that, but you just got a header up there?
Well, yeah, from my perspective, it ends up at the end, which is the recommendation in the report to the board. So, really what we're asking for at the end, and we can do this now or later, is this group should make, the end is, the outcome is that by July 31st, 2018, we would want a comprehensive plan for improving the overall performance of Indian Prairie School District, steps taken to implement a plan, and to develop an ongoing model for district-community collaboration and communication. So I see your point, but I just thought it was addressed at the end of the document. It may or may not, other people may have different opinions.
I had the same, the same thought that Lori did when I, when I read it. I wasn't, after I read it, I assumed you were looking at the community engagement charge, but it just, from a standpoint of wrapping up the, and completing that particular section, I didn't see it synthesized as well either.
Could we maybe just say, therefore, we wish to build, define, take, and just end it? I don't know, it's.
Yeah, I had the same thing, but I also kind of thought, well, that's what the rest of the document was for, but I agree, I think it would be clear if there's a sentence there that says to engage the community to achieve that, or whatever.
And of course, I'm different, because I viewed it, I viewed it as it laid out the mission, the goals, then I read it as the accomplishing our mission part, those bullet points were, here's what we're gonna find out, and then it's gonna set a roadmap for the board to decide where they want to go in the future, based on what's important that we hear back from the community. So, I guess I understand and hear what, what the three women before me spoke about, that, that I think maybe there wasn't as clear of a charge, but I think when we get the information back, hopefully in smart goal format and, you know.
I think the charge is there, it's just the way it's.
That's fine.
I think, I almost think, when I look at this, the community engagement charge, that first, those first couple sentences, that's what.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Yeah, that's what completes that portion.
Okay, so, somebody wordsmith that for me.
But you could just take the first sentence under community engagement charge and put it up.
I would agree.
That in order to, so, therefore, in order to do these things, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the formation of a broad-based coalition of community members and staff, period. And then you can just do community engagement charge. The charge to this group is.
Yes, yes, totally agree.
And that answers your, Lori's.
Okay, want me to move that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep.
Justin, Kathy?
Agreed.
Mr. Carrubus?
I didn't follow all the changes. You guys are moving way too fast.
That is so unusual, Mr. Carrubus.
It is right there.
If only I could see it.
You need some glasses?
Mr. Carrubus is right in front of you in written form.
I need to come over there with a red pen and outline it for you on your sheet.
It looks great, Mr. President, thank you.
Let's move on.
Second time this stuff today.
So now comes the perhaps more difficult part, maybe not, because this pretty much includes not only a draft charge that is, I think, concise and coherent, which we clearly want to do to our community and to a consultant, but it also, this is where I attempted to incorporate the myriad of thoughts that the board had in terms of what they thought this should look like. So, unless I hear something different, I'm just gonna go through the bullet point and then try to briefly kind of give a synopsis of what board members thought should go underneath here. So I changed it a little bit, so let's, just because it made more sense to me, but that doesn't matter. Let's go with what's in the draft document, which is, one of the things we want this, well, I'm gonna say it like this, to accomplish this goal, the group should determine current, accurate, and consistent information that reflects a broad base of community perceptions and priorities. So some of the thoughts, we can, I'm not gonna go through all of them, I know, I'm going, what, I changed the order of it when I did the document. Yes, I did, just because it made more sense to me, but that's okay, let's go with, that's why I said, let's go with what the draft is, unless people want to change it too.
Can we go with what the draft is right now and then see?
Sure, okay. So let's go, which draft? Mine or the one with the input? They're different.
Oh, you switched them, okay.
I switched bullet points.
Let's look at the one with the input.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Let's look at the one that the public's looking at.
Oh.
That's, that was my thought.
If that makes sense, yes, that makes sense.
I did something different as I tried to compile stuff to make sense for me.
Sure, sure.
So, I just, and for the public, I just moved bullet point one and two. So again, let's go under current, accurate, and consistent information that reflects the broad base of community perceptions and priorities. So, we asked lots of questions. In fact, I think one takeaway I had is, this was question-filled, which is great, you know, we don't want to dictate things, we want to ask questions and then receive feedback for them. So, does our community believe that students are getting a poor, good, or excellent education was one of the questions. Is it important that District 204 is a high-achieving district? Is equality of school's important to where you raise your family? Do they believe that District 204 is transparent with budgetary items and how decisions are made? Is the community comfortable with responses from district employees, administrators, board members, and superintendent, and believe their concerns have been heard and responded to appropriately? What does the community want to know? How do they want this information to be presented? So those were some of the input items that I received from you that I thought fit very well under the bullet point of current, accurate, and consistent information that reflects the broad base of community perceptions and priorities. So it seems appropriate to me. So, open for discussion.
What, what are you doing with all those bullets or whatever, because they're kind of commentary, they're not actually in the document?
I think one of the things that we would do with those bullets is that we would provide them to whatever consultant we hire and say, this is what's important to the board.
Do you mean, is this the formulation of questions for, use these as help to formulate the survey, is that what you're saying?
Yes. If, if that company does a survey, clearly, these are things that I think needs to be shared with the consultant in order that they understand what our needs are.
Also be a part of how they formulate the topics for the groups that meet.
I, I see our input as giving direction to both the consultant and the community, understanding that we play a lesser role in the community engagement activity, and that staff and consultant play a more major role.
I think this is just our, you know, comments to you, the bullet points that you put together, and then to wrap it up, I think that's just a start, you know? I think from that, they're gonna, there's gonna be maybe additions, there's gonna be some that can be even better combined to get what we need, so, yeah, I'd say, you know, by, by putting it under that bullet point, the current, accurate, and consistent information about perceptions and priorities, I think that is the perfect place to put that, because again, they may have questions that they're, they've asked in the past that have helped get the answers that we need, that we're looking for as well.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I'll go back to what I said before, I think it's a wonderful way to understand the community's expectation and to get feedback of what we could do better communication-wise, what we could do better as a district, but I think what it lends itself to is, it's a wonderful vehicle for the community understanding what the board and the district have been doing also the past five, 10 years. So, I think it's gonna be a wonderful two-way communication based on some of the feedback that we hear, because then we'll be able to communicate effectively to where their needs are.
Well, now, it doesn't tell us what we need to improve on, but I think it tells us, you know, what we're, maybe what we're doing right, that we don't want to mess with, you know, or rock the boat on. Hopefully, we'll get some of that as well.
Others?
I look at that first bullet point as, what are, what is the community's perceptions and priorities? And I like the open-ended nature of it. I've always struggled with, how do we as a board engage the community? Because we can't, as seven people in an open meeting, engage this ambiguous community. And so asking open-ended questions, what are your perceptions? What are your priorities? And going through the process of engaging a consultant to do that allows us to, as a board, engage the community, satisfy our legal obligations, and try to get the information we need to make decisions. Yeah, we're elected, yeah, we need to make decisions based on what we perceive, our community perceptions and priorities, but it's better to have the input. So I like the fact that it's open-ended. Some of our suggestions are directions and guidance, but the community wants to take it over here, let's go over here.
Yep, and several board members really commented on that process, that they did want it open-ended, and that was important. So, that was a general theme, so thanks for reinforcing that. Are we good with that bullet point?
I really think so. We're, you know, we're, we're at a point where.
I really think so, we're, you know, we're, we're at a point where we have some challenging things before us, and it's really critical for us to be able to hear what the community thinks, and that's what's obviously driven us to this point, but hopefully, the community will feel and recognize that as we are grappling with the decisions we have to make, that it's extremely important that we make those decisions in light of hearing what is a priority to them, and what's in best interest, you know, of, of the students and of, of the entire educational community, and hearing that directly from them.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. The second bullet point was an understanding of the role, objectives, accomplishments, and needs of the district. And one other thing, almost, if not all, and I would say all of us would like to occur, is to provide the community with an overview of District 204's current status. And we hope the report includes information regarding our most recent demographic study, which is coming up in September, our current financial conditions, to include our current funding mechanisms, ever-changing, which might mean also property tax freeze and pension cost shift, employee salary and benefit information versus our six comparable districts, current and future building maintenance issues, current special programs and extracurricular activities. So clearly, before our community can give input, it would be important for us to give a current and accurate status report of where we sit. So, again, that bullet point seems to fit our input together. Discussion.
Mr. Azak, I, and I'm certain that we'll do this, the one thing that I think is important for us to share as we do this is, why do we have the comparable school districts? I think that's really important for us to ensure that is communicated as we're, we're doing this, because everyone may not be aware of that.
Sure. My guess is that would be done, but I, us just putting that into a future consultant perhaps raises the red flag that needs to be raised. Any other input?
I'm struggling with the wording. "To accomplish this goal, the group should determine an understanding." Uh, that's not really what we're shooting for. We're trying to determine, uh, the community's understanding, or we're trying to determine... There's something missing there that I haven't figured out yet.
Do you think over time, because this is a yearly process, it's, that it's, that it is really a process, at the beginning, people will need to be told what the current stat- status is, and then over time, you, once you develop that, you know, I've seen that in my own learning here on the board, even though I was an educator in the district for 38 years, there was further development. I'm sure everyone here on, you know, at, at the board had that kind of feeling too, so...
I, I was gonna say, when I put my questions together in my head, I was, I was more thinking of what...
You wanna get your microphone?
Sorry, I was more thinking about what is the current perception of the community, so kind of where you're at, but I see this engagement process as hopefully as well educating the community too. So I, I'm, I was good with that bullet point, because I was thinking this was, it, exactly, it's a process, but I would like, you know, you asked, the question was, what do you want that report to tell you? And to me, I wanted to know, where was the community right now, you know, what's their understanding? Do they know the reasons why we do things, especially in regards to equity? So, um, but, you know, that's an education process too, so I kinda, I see it a before-and-after kind of thing.
That was my, uh, when I met, I had lunch with Karen last week, that was my first expression to her, is I wanna, I wanna get a good pulse of what the community understands about us as a district, but then I fell back on my consultant job role, and I said, "Well, to, it's, it's wonderful to hear what their understanding of, of, you know, good things and bad things and whatever is going on in their perception, but you almost need to take a step even before that and find out what their expectations are." Because I think when you find out what people's expectations are, and what they come to need or desire, then you can say, "Okay, well, given X, Y, Z, how would you perceive that we get to your need or your, to your expectation?" So, I think both are good, I think it just depends on how you wrap it up at the end, you know?
Well, to satisfy Justin's point, if we just added, you know, "To accomplish this goal, the group should determine the community's understanding of the role, objectives, accomplishments, and needs of the district."
Yeah, I think we're all talking the same thing, but it doesn't read the way we want it to.
So I would like to focus...
That would be my suggestion as far as wording.
So, can we focus on the bullet point, though? Okay, I, I...
I read the bullet point as part of a sentence, and so I'm just looking at the broader picture. If you just look at the bullet point, I think we have 100% agreement on that, except, we don't want the group to determine these things, we want the group to determine the community's understanding of these things. I don't want the group coming...
Yes, like, yeah.
Somebody write that down?
Didn't I just say that?
Yes, but it finally...
Drive it home, right.
Finally sunk in to me.
If you put a tie, no.
Go get my tie.
Justin just put a bow on it.
Let me go get my tie. The community's understanding.
And again, it's under the, before we even get to the bullets, where it says, "To accomplish this goal, the group should determine," that's, that's part of the...
The group should determine the community's understanding of the role, objectives, accomplishments, and needs of the district.
See, the, the problem is throughout, I mean, we're gonna get to number three and have the same issue.
I see what you're, okay.
So we gotta look ahead and say, we need, I think, pull it back. "To accomplish this goal, group should determine..."
The group should assess the community's...
Yeah, something like that, right.
From that, that's the first bullet, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's in the, I, I agree, I think it's to, "To accomplish this goal, the group should..."
Their other option is to put a colon after "should" and use a different word for each of those.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm gonna throw a question here. I think a survey will determine current understanding of role, objectives, accomplishments, and needs of the district, I'm not sure the group will determine that.
Who's gonna determine that?
A, a survey will give us, an, an understanding, will give this board an understanding of the current communities, understanding of the role of communication, of, and objectives and accomplishments and needs of the district. I think a group should be taking a lot of this information, educating themselves, and then saying to the board in a final report, what should the role and objectives and accomplishments and the needs of the district, what are they and what should they be? I'm, because the community's understanding right now is what we're trying to kinda, that, to me, again, it's a starting point, it's not necessarily the end result, because like Mike said, when you first get on the board, you have one idea, when you have been here for a while, you start to understand what's going on. So I, I, you know, which one do we want? Do we want just the initial understanding of the community, or do we want a group who has educated themselves and gone through a process to give us a final idea of what our charge really is?
See, I see, similar to you, I see a representative group, a group that includes, you know, people that have children in our school, community members don't, you know, a, a real mix of people coming here, and that group is really, should be a representative group, a subset of what the community is thinking. You would think that would address that issue versus, you know, what do you think the community is? Well, they are the community, so why wouldn't we take their input versus the input of what they think? I think that will be just all tied together.
And, and to me, the survey would give us a, kind of like, the base, starting point of where the larger community is at, where do we have to educate people more in, and hopefully that group will be part of that process too.
I'm going back to Susan's point earlier about explaining the six comparable districts. You know, we often get questions of why, you know, why don't we compare to Oswego or Plainfield or whatever? I think if we can get their understanding of what some of these things are, you know, again, it goes maybe back to perception, like you kinda mentioned earlier, but I think we need to know what they understand the role to be, I think that's gonna help us going forward, because again, we may have to educate the, some pieces of that, as to, again, why we chose those six districts.
So I go to the very last se- uh, last part of the sentence, is "The group should determine," and to me, the group is this group that has volunteered to be a part of this process for a long period of time. It's not, you know, I'm assuming the way this works is usually there's a survey first, and then focus groups, and you're, you're kind of figure, trying to figure out what are people thinking, correct?
Correct me if I'm wrong.
I actually think, so this bullet point was originally first in the document, and I actually think this refers to, if you remember the consultant's presentation, about, one of the first things I think that they will recommend is we do a state of the district presentation, and I think that is really getting, trying to get information out to the group for a better understanding of what the issues are with the district. So when I read that, I thought of that discussion about doing, you know, presentations on the state, kind of the state of the district in all these different areas.
That wasn't first, it actually was, oh, it was first, yes, it was.
Going back to this, I think my problem is with the word "determine." I think, like, "To accomplish this goal, the group should focus on the following factors, areas." We don't, they're, they're not determining anything, you know, they're, they're getting information, and then they're making recommendations. I think we're, I'm tripping up on the word "determine." I mean, I think that meets what you're looking for, educate, solicit, you know, work through the goals, but they're not determining...
Making recommendations or... So can take a "determine," would you...
Assess...
"To accomplish this goal, the group should focus on the following areas," or focus...
I like that, that's very simple.
Yeah. And I still want, I think, the community's understanding.
Yeah, me too, I think that helps.
So for the secretary? "To accomplish this goal, the group should," remove the word "determine," "focus on the following factors." Subject to anybody else's input.
Following areas?
Yeah, areas is great.
So, can we move to the next bullet point? The next bullet point is, "Long-term goals for the district in terms of student achievement, staff development, and compensation facilities, and other educational performance criteria. Almost all of us agree, what does the community perceive as both established and future needs for continued excellence in our district? What do we want our schools to be? That is equitable, class size, well-maintained, safe, air-conditioned, astroturf fields? What kind of special programs do we want? What kind of resources do we want to provide to our children? That's how you provided input, and that's how I interpreted, I don't know how others feel about that in terms of your interpretation."
I think it's important to point out that when you mention those things, it's not like, "Do we want astroturf?" Or it's, what's the priority?
Yes.
You know, it, class sizes are what they are, here's why they're at where they are. Do you want them higher? Are you comfortable where they're at? Do you want them lower? So I think those, you mentioned those areas, but it's the, still the spectrum.
Right.
I'm struggling with the second bullet point, uh, because I'm not sure it's really the group's task to recommend steps be taken to implement the plan, I would rather it say...
Well, let's, let's do that one first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So let's just focus on the long-term goals, I'll move to the other bullet point, we can go from there.
Was I, okay, apologize.
I'm not sure I like the term "long-term goals," I like priorities better, I don't know.
Well, that was, yeah, it was weird.
What's the difference?
One is...
Lime, lime sounds kind of long.
Yeah, because there are some things that we do need to prioritize, and we need to know, it, does that mean, you know, the maintenance of our buildings, or does that mean class size?
So...
You know, or, or something else. So, it's great to have long-term goals, I think we all, kind of in some, in our minds, have those, and we know what they are for the district, but where are our priorities? You know, is, is it bringing, you know, getting those...
I, I wonder, though, if you, and maybe, I don't know, it, it seems like the following bullet point is more short-term steps, and so maybe you wanna switch those around? Because it seems like what steps need to be taken to accomplish, well, it says those goals, so those are kind of like your objectives to get to your goal.
Or if you like goals, we could say goals and priority, I mean, what are your...
Or you could just...
You know, long-term goals and priorities.
Here is my thinking on the...
Priorities and long-term goals.
My thinking was the following, if we just focus on, in my opinion, the community rightfully so, has a lot of needs and a lot of wishes currently, but I would also hope that during the course of this year process, that they begin to think about five years and 10 years down the road, because clearly, things don't, don't stay the same. There's different instructional paradigms, there's gonna be different technology, there's gonna be maybe different staffing needs, who knows? So some part of that, in the course of year, I would hope would be, you know, they would think about, not only, "I want to astroturf field tomorrow," but, you know, I think it's both current and long-term.
Okay, so here's a thought. I like what Kathy said, um, as far as maybe swapping those two, and then as far as the one that Lori was talking about, maybe it should say something to the effect of, "What steps should be taken to establish short and long-term goals with an ongoing two-way communication process with the community?" So you're adding short and long-term goals with an, with an ongoing two-way communication with the community, and then you put that bullet point before, after that? I don't know, just a thought.
Ms. Price, is it goals and priority, or is it long-term, short-term, or both? Ms. Price, is it goals and priority, or is it long-term, short-term, or both?
I think there's a difference between priorities and goals. Priorities are more short-term, absolutely, but I don't know if I still want to call them short-term goals, because that just seems like, oh, that's something out there. Priority means, this is what our community wants us to get done. These are their top three things, or, you know, right. And isn't that what we, we are looking for, is where are the priorities? We know what the long-term goals are, I mean, we know what we want to do, I mean, as far as, we have an idea. We want the community's input on that, to make sure that they align, but based on all the conversations we've had around resources and, you know, finances and what may come to us, you know, we've kind of set some of those long-term goals aside, essentially, but we want to know what the priorities are, don't we?
So should it be priorities instead of goals?
That's, I mean.
We, we have a goal on student achievement, do we want the community's input on that?
I do.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Okay, so.
Because we want to make sure, we're, we're making sure we align.
I, I kind of, I.
Goals are more overarching.
Like priorities and goals, our long-term, too, because, you know, are, is your wish to be in a high-achieving school district, that's a priority, and that's long-term and short-term?
Well, you're right, because there, again, if you've got kids that are aging out of the system, high achievement may not be high on your list, if you've got kids that are.
Could change.
Right.
Or am I not?
Right.
Value, no, that's.
No, I know.
But, so that's, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I, I agree, I'm not sure that the word goal is necessarily there, but definitely, for me, it was, what are your priorities? That was my question for.
You could put priorities and goals and let the group come to their own conclusions. I mean, we could put the trust in the group.
Is the timeframe important, or should we just take it out? Like.
Well, I think you're interested in both, aren't you? I mean, you're not asking them, only tell me what something's going to be like five years from now, you're telling, let me know about what's going on, what do you want to see happen near-term, and what do you want to see longer-term could be part of their chart or whatever. I, I think, because we were talking about leaving things open before, that's a, a good open for them to have.
So would it make it more open if we remove the long-term, or do we need to provide direction to make sure there's a short-term and a long-term?
What about priorities and goals?
With an ongoing two-way communication?
I get, I'm.
No, I mean, instead of saying long-term, I'm saying, maybe, maybe that's it, removing that long-term, just, you know, priorities and goals, but are.
Yeah, I mean, we've all had that, we've all had those questionnaires where you, you say, you know, rank your favorite, whatever, you know, first to, you've got like 50 choices, you know, and you had to fill it out, one, two, three, you know. That's what I kind of envision, like, where are your priorities? Okay, first priority is this, you know, market, whatever, convey that, and then, okay, AstroTurf fields, that's way down on my li, you know, 50, you know, whatever the number may be. Again, it's open-ended, so it's no predetermined number, but you're going to find out, there's going to be some similarities, I think, as, as they compile this data, if they were to do it in that form, format, like, just establishing priorities. You're going to compile that data where it comes together and says, okay, the community's priority is X, maintenance buildings or whatever, you know, I think that data's going to come through, and where there's, where it's a little iffy, maybe that's our responsibility to, you know, as far as the big picture, where we choose.
So help Jackie write that.
Remove the term, remove the phrase long-term?
Mm-hmm.
Add priorities and goals. Add priorities and.
Are we good?
I didn't hear the last part, what?
If you review the screen, remove long-term, add priorities and.
Oh, priorities and, okay.
Good. Let's address Mark's next bullet point here.
Oh, sorry, I was way down here.
Yeah, you're ahead of us. Then what steps need to be taken to accomplish those priorities and goals in terms of resources, programs, facilities, and operations? So for me, Mark, I determined that the bullet point above that was a wish list to a degree. And I felt that that bullet point was when a community group really goes to work and say, what can, what are our priorities? We can't have everything as our priorities because we only have so many financial resources. That's when you start winnowing out what's important, what's not important. If everything is important, then the conversation goes, how do we pay for that? How do we make it happen? So for me, that bullet point was another step in the process, where the bullet point above that was just saying, here's 20 things we really want, or 10 or 5, and then the question comes, ooh, based on the information that we receive from the district, we only have this amount of money, now what? How do we approach this? How do we want the board to act? So that was my take on that bullet point.
So I'll go back to a previous thing, so in other words, what I guess what I'm hearing you say is when the, the committee that we put together on the air conditioning, when they came back to us and said, here's what we would like you to do, here's what we decided was the best way to do it, and based on all the options that we had, we thought this was the best course of action. And then from there, the board can decide what to do, so is that kind of what you were thinking?
That's, that's how I perceived that bullet point. I saw it, another step in the process. That's how I perceived it, I don't know how others, so open it up.
I would maybe just change accomplish to prioritize, because now that you've got your list of things, you know, they're people's priorities and goals, what step does this group need to take?
I, you know, I'm, I guess I'm uncomfortable with the steps. I'm kind of feeling like now we're putting the role of administration into the hands of the community too much, because how do they know what the steps are to accomplish this? So maybe, like you're saying, it, the next thing is, is, you know, find out what the priorities and goals of the community are, and then prioritize them, so that we have a prioritized list.
That was my first thought.
Take out what steps need to be taken, just take out.
Yeah, yeah, because I don't think they will determine the steps.
Right.
Not determining anything.
Right.
Okay, so can we use the word, because that was my first thought, too, that's where I got kind of wonky with it. Could instead of steps be used recommendations?
Nope.
I think we're.
Okay.
Justin, what's your alternative?
Why I said no, why, give me your.
What recommendations need to be taken to accomplish those goals and priorities?
Our or their recommendation?
I think what you're trying to get, what we're trying to get to is we're trying to determine, I mean, ultimately, we're basically trying to determine, what are the priori, where, where does the community want to go in light of limited resources, what's the prioritization list?
Yes.
That's basically what we're asking.
That's how I see it.
So we're not asking them what steps, but we need to figure out is, what do you want, and, and are we, I don't know if we're getting that with the bullet before, but we're basically trying to find out.
What do you want first?
What do you want first, and then, then we have to, I know we ultimately have to get to, okay, how are you willing, if, if we, you know, if these are, if, if you have six that are really hot priorities, and we don't have enough resources, what are either you willing to give up, or are you willing, are we willing to fund it some way?
That's how I see it.
That's kind of what we're trying, that's what I thought we were trying to really get to.
That's how I see it.
Can we just say, I'm sorry, can we just say prioritize in terms of resources, programs, facilities, and operations, or is that putting too much? Because again, we're just kind of asking them.
Well, some of the stuff that's mentioned in here is like, oh, do you think professional development's important, and, and again, that's something that is more administration to say, this is why this is really important in order to accomplish this, you need this. You know, whereas, you know, I guess that's when we get into that class size discussion, too, you know? But if you want class size, it costs this much, but what are we trying to accomplish?
You know, with, with us giving them all the ammunition, this group that we're giving them as far as guiding principles, goals, the information from the community, them looking at short-term, long-term, I'm sorry, not short-term, long-term, priorities and goals, I think we need to have them give us some feedback as far as, I mean, we might know how to accomplish something from our viewpoint as a board member, but I think it's always good to hear the perception or the input from the community of how they would also make things happen. Even though they don't sit on this board, I think it's important for them to feel that they have that say in that. So while I understand the steps, or however you want to word it, is kind of bizarre because they're really not an administrator of the district, or they're really not a board member, I think it's important that we get all stakeholders' input on how we accomplish this. And I think that's only, you know, that's, that's one of the pieces in this puzzle that we need to make sure we understand of how they would accomplish this.
Yeah, I'm going back to what Kathy said about what administration's role is in all this versus community versus board, and, you know, when we talk about it in that bullet point, in terms of resources, um, this, I mean, this group needs to be made aware of what those resources are, so it goes back to that initial dialogue with the community.
Sorry, I'm trying to look, sorry.
Because even this, this group may not know what the resources are, so we're asking them to do this, but they may not know at that point, you know, they may not be, unless we've fully explained that.
Wouldn't the second bullet point cover that?
I kind of see this in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you know, we, we need to make sure that we're including all of that, because, you know, the second bullet point talks about the community's understanding of the role, objectives, accomplishments, and needs. It doesn't say anything about resources in there. That maybe that, maybe we add the resources piece to the second bullet point, the community's understanding of the role, objectives, the needs and resource, or resources and needs of the district.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Because we've, we've not talked about that at all.
Right.
At least in our bullet points. We just outline it and put it in there.
Go resources before the needs, I'm good with that.
Mm-hmm.
Jackie, can you go second bullet point?
So do we have to wordsmith?
Oh, what about the other things that are listed in the fourth bullet point? If we go down that path?
Well, I think if we.
Again, I, I'm really of combining, if you want to take a couple things out of that what-steps bullet point, and throw it into the priorities and goals bullet point.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, too.
Yeah.
Is that bullet point necessary at all?
Right.
When you do priorities and goals, is that assume that they develop them and then develop a real priority list?
Right.
That's my other thought.
So throw programs, facilities, and operations into the second bullet point?
Yeah, facilities is already up there on the other one.
Oh, yes, it is.
So are we talking about removing that?
Programs would be good up there, I think, because programs are something people, you know, the community connects to.
What's that?
Are you following?
Yes, I'm, but I'm waiting to find out if we've come to a conclusion.
That is, that is why you're the wisest one here, Jackie.
I think we agreed two was, two was good, right? We agreed to throw resources up in bullet two?
I, I question that. I mean, why not programs? Why not facilities and operations, then?
I think that's.
We're going to put those in three, so that they know what they're.
We're not going to educate the community on those issues? I mean, we're, we're starting to break down finer terms, and are we, are we getting too much into the weeds on that with, you know, if you say we've excluded resources from educating the community, well, now we've excluded programs, now we've excluded facilities and operations.
But I think programs could be talked about under accomplishments as well.
Under resources, too.
And I think the resources would be needs of the district, I mean, I can go through all of that and, and say that it's covered. I'm just posing it as a question, I don't have an answer to that, I'm just, you know, we can, we can keep rolling in two.
Oh, we've got.
I, would I, well, I know what you're saying, Justin, but I think these words, especially resources and needs, I think that's so over-encompassing, and based on the information they're going to be getting from, a lot of this information, again, I think maybe you let the group go down that path that they feel is best. Without taking, I don't think you're taking it off the table, I think everything is encompassing. I don't know.
So my assessment is that we're close here at six o'clock. So we have, we're either going to finish in the next five to 10 minutes, or you feel that we need to work through this. So I'm kind of interested in, A, do you want to continue? We have a short executive session, according to Dr. Sullivan, you want it, do you want, do we want to continue?
I think we could finish this up.
Yep.
Okay.
I, you know, so go back to what Mark was saying, I think there is a, I think maybe that's a way to differentiate some of these bullet points, is the broader understanding of some, some of these terms. And then, you know, to me, programs are a way to get to student achievement, so, but everybody has their love for, for a program in this district, whatever, whatever it is. So maybe, so I, I guess for me, that discussion in the community is going to be very important because for them to, for the community to start to understand how these pieces all fit together, or maybe sometimes they don't fit together so well, and that helps them prioritize, too. And are, are we doing programs that we shouldn't be doing anymore? There's a huge cost-saving there, so that, so not having programs mentioned doesn't seem appropriate, but is it in that role, objectives, and accomplishments, and resources? Is it in that one, or is it in the next one, where you're, you're talking about, well, even student achievement doesn't seem to be along there, that one should be in the second one.
We either need to throw everything out there and include programs and operations, or we need to just make it so broad that, I think we need to go either one, one direction or the other, probably.
Facilities and operations is one, to me is like, kind of, group, you know, we've grouped it in bullet point four, but we didn't, we separated just facilities in bullet point three. I think we need to treat facilities and operations as one topic, so to speak, and then, you know, if you want to put programming in there, I think that's appropriate. The one other thing I noticed is, in that bullet point, we have terms, in terms of student achievement, staff development, facilities, and other educational performance criteria. That, explain what you mean by that, because to me, that seemed, that should go up with student achievement.
I didn't write that, so I can't, we can get rid of that.
I don't know if we need to get rid of just.
I mean, an educational performance criteria could be, you know, how many of our kids matriculate into universities?
Okay.
Those kinds of things, other than a.
Other than just achievement.
So what do you think of, on bullet three, priorities and goals of the districts in terms of student achievement, staff development and compensation, facilities and operations, and other educational programs and performance criteria? You're lumping facilities and operations, you're lumping educational programs and performance criteria. That way, we've pretty much covered everything.
I get, I'm starting to think of it in terms of, what do you want, and then there's the how do you want to get there? And so if we separate these things according to that, it would be, make more, less cognitive dissonance in my mind.
Yes, I know, but I think our job is to, to, to the. Yes, I know, but I think our job is to, to determine the what. I think the skill of a consultant gets to the how.
But I mean, these, in terms of these questions only, Mike, the community's understanding of the what do you want? You know, what are the objectives? What are the accomplishments? I, I don't know, so let's see, it's kind of confusing in there. And what, what student achievement do you want? That's a what, right? But then the how is development and compensation, facilities. So that's where I'm saying, the questions, I think, maybe we need to fix them that, in that way.
Yeah, the only reason I put through operations up in, in three, and as well as programs is because it's also listed at four, right? So I was trying to be consistent, but at the same time, I didn't want to be redundant, so I don't know.
So are there two bullet?
If we have only one bullet point?
Are there other bullet points, Kathy? Now that, are, do we add one to be more concise?
I think we could.
That's, I guess, my question, I, you know? Is there a diff, is it a different question? Are we getting stuck by trying to put everything under one bullet point?
What if you just made it even broader? Priorities and goals for the district? What steps need to be taken to accomplish those goals? What steps need to be taken to establish? Just leave it open.
I like.
You're trying to, you're trying to put everything in.
Yes.
And maybe you're just better off opening it up. The consultant will get your feedback and know those pieces. Maybe just leaving it broader is a better.
Keep it.
They should be able to drill down. If we keep it broad, they should be able to drill down.
So are we? Any comments on that recommendation?
Keep it simple, sounds awesome.
So priorities and goals for the district? Semi-colonial?
Semi-colonial? Yeah.
Okay.
Community's understanding of the district?
And then we're taking the rest out, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Is everybody okay with that?
I think so.
Yes.
Let's do that.
I think that's what has been messing me up.
I guess one, one thing I've been thinking is that we're asking them to come up with the priorities, and it's, it's not bounded by funding or anything like that, right? I mean, it's like, if you ask me what kind of car I want to drive, I could say a Lamborghini, but I don't want to pay for that. I mean, is there any, how does that get back to?
I think that's accomplished, see, again, I see these as a process. So I think one and two sets the framework for here's where we're at. And that should help guide a community to determine priorities where they would say, maybe, no offense to the Ford Focus, but, you know, we might be more of a Ford Focus district than a Lamborghini district, even though we, you know, want it to be the Lamborghini district.
But if the community is willing to pay for that Lamborghini, that's what we need to determine.
Well, that's what I want to understand, right?
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Ultimately, I want to get to the point of how far are they willing to go with what they want to achieve?
So in other words, what steps need to be taken to accomplish?
Maybe that's the second phase, maybe that's the second phase. Like this phase is, let's get the priorities and find out how strong those priorities are. And then you have to start figuring out, well, how much does each one of those cost?
Right.
And, you know, but also the questions that are kind of in there about, you know, willingness to have increased taxes or whatever have to somehow be.
I think we will find some of that out too in bullet point one, when we possibly do that survey of, again, what are you willing to, you know, what do you value? What are you willing to?
I'm going to try to bring this back. So I think we're, we, I think we agreed to bullet point one, two, and three. Let's focus on Lori's comment, and does that fit in bullet point four?
But see, I don't, when we talk about steps, I kind of go back. We set up the priorities and goals, and then we need to determine, not so much the steps to accomplish, but what are you, we need to get to, what are we willing to invest in order to, to make those priorities and goals happen? I don't, I don't see it in, in terms of us asking them steps.
So what if we get rid of four?
That's what I would suggest.
I would vote for getting rid of four.
That's what I suggest.
And I think five is okay.
I want to say something about, I want to add, I think we still want the how. What are your priorities and goals? How do you want us to reach those priorities and goals?
That's, that's it.
That's it.
Ding ding.
Yeah, I mean, we need to some how, because the, the priority might be, you know, I want, I want to consolidate buildings. All right, well, how do we want to go about doing that? So I think, you know, we need to.
Beautiful, that's simple and makes sense.
Beautiful, Jackie.
Yeah, it was all me.
Are we good with that?
We need to change steps a little bit.
How do you want the district?
To reach those priorities and goals?
How do you want the district instead of us?
Yeah.
I was, I was speaking a little short of.
Well, and going one step further, should it be the board? I mean, because.
It's, they're just, they're, it's just they're.
We want to hear from the community.
It's more how should the district, more, how should the district, not how do you want?
We would ultimately have to work on the decision or whatever, but.
It's just their recommendations.
Right, I'm getting ahead of myself.
Can we change that to how, how should the district, instead of how do you want the district?
Yeah, I like that.
Should the district, yeah.
That's good. The last bullet point actually was another step of the process. And that step was, how do we establish, not only, this is not just a point in time in terms of community engagement. Hopefully, this is a springboard for continued community engagement. And should that be included in the charge?
If it is, I'd like you to read, almost like the one above, how should the board and district establish a long-term meaningful ongoing two-way communication process?
Why, it doesn't four already answer that question? Does the community want long-term, meaningful, ongoing two-way communication? How should we get there?
Yeah. Because priorities and goals.
I mean, we're trying to.
Communication is part of priorities and goals.
We're trying to say that that's our goal.
Right. Well, it is one of our goals, actually.
Yes, it is one.
This thing is a one-time, you know, exercise for a year, right? You're saying at the end there, recommend how you would like to engage the community going forward.
Yes.
So I don't like the word long-term, so now that Lori has me on that kick, I'm like, I would like that out. But you want to ask what, tell us how you would like to have a meaningful and ongoing relationship other than your 30 minutes you get to say something at this board meeting or whatever, or?
Three, no, it's not 30 minutes.
Three minutes, yeah.
So how should the district establish a long-term meaningful?
Yeah.
So we get rid of the steps again?
Look, look at the very last one at the very bottom, which Karen was pointing to. That really kind of, I think that encompasses it right there.
Mm-hmm.
But we, but if we're going to have that as one of our, wait, recommendations?
It's our charge.
Yeah, our, okay. So.
We want that information.
So we have it there, I think.
So do you, but. Develop an ongoing. Yes, yes. I like that better, and you can only have, and then you only need it once. What, what you just said, Karen?
I don't, I don't think that we need that bullet.
Right.
Yeah.
Since we have that at the bottom.
But what I heard, what I believe I heard Karen just say, and I'm, maybe I'm just, we could get rid of that there, but at the bottom, the last, very last bullet point, put, how should the district develop an ongoing model for district? So in other words, you still want their input, right? But you can get rid of it here and just keep it down below, but it should still say how? Because going back to what Justin's saying, maybe they don't want it. Maybe they don't care, you know?
Well, look at, but see, we say, it says, upon completion of this process, the group should make recommendations. So.
Okay.
That would come from.
So are we removing bullet point four? Because the last one, whatever it is.
Five, yeah, get rid of it.
Okay, let's remove it. Let's focus on the bottom. And that's what the outcomes are. So I think we do want a comprehen, well, maybe we do. A comprehensive plan for improving the overall performance of the school districts. We've got that word step, so I don't know if you want a wordsmith, that steps to be taken to implement the plan.
Recommendations, still like.
So.
I think overall performance, that leads itself, or lends itself to just talking about achievement, in my mind. I think we'd say maybe a comprehensive plan for improving Indian Prairie School District.
Okay.
Is more broad, and again, it would cover whether it's maintenance or, you know.
School consolidation, school.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I just think we just take the overall performance out of there. Improve, the overall performance of, remove that.
Comprehensive plan for.
The district improvement.
What if they don't want to improve the district? Just throwing it out there.
A comprehensive plan for Indian Prairie School District?
Yeah, then we're done, so.
A comprehensive plan for Indian Prairie School District?
No.
No.
It's improving the district.
Improving.
Some people might have a different perception of what improving is, but it's an improvement. I'm not asking for anything but an improvement.
Does it, I hate to throw this, hold, throw this wrench in there, but does it also need to preface it by saying, based on the information gathered?
No, I think that, that's assumed.
It's assumed, okay.
Please, if they don't.
I get what you're asking.
Well, I think as the readout, and, and, you know, and as the readout comes, that will be, is that shared with the community? It will, that will be, that will be part of it.
Are we good with that bullet point?
No, I have a question. So a comprehensive plan, to me, implies something beyond a recommendation.
Well, and we, I don't know if we want the group to give us a, do we want them to give us the comprehensive plan?
How about a comprehensive summary?
Well, the recommendation is a plan.
How about a summary instead of plan?
Well, we take out comprehensive plan and say, improving Indian Prairie School District. I mean, because that, that encompasses.
Yeah, but I want some, I want a summary.
Yes, it should be a summary.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, it's a summary or recommendation.
A summary for improvement.
It's a recommendation.
Well, it says recommendation above.
Yeah.
So should it say comprehensive summary of the recommendations?
Nope. I'm cool with the plan.
Others.
I agree with Lori that it's, it's really not the community's job to come up with the plan. That is administration and, and.
That's the how.
Yeah, I agree with that. I, I, I agree with.
So I like, I like summary.
So I think.
It's their recommendation of a plan now.
You're overruled.
So it's not the plan. It's their recommendation of a plan. It's not the plan, if that makes sense.
It's saying make recommendations regarding improving Indian Prairie School District?
I like that, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that than a plan. I just feel like a plan, a plan is a plan.
All right.
It's a man.
All right, fine.
Recommendations for improving.
And if we don't go with it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Recommendations for improving Indian Prairie School District?
Yeah.
Because if they come up with a plan and we don't implement that, because then it's going to look like we didn't listen to them at all. We didn't value their input.
I like recommendations. I'll go with what Susan said.
Wait, the group should make.
You have recommendations up in the first sentence.
Yeah, the group should make recommendations by no later, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so they're making recommendations regarding the improvement of Indian Prairie School District.
Okay.
So we're back to what I said.
Because recommendations is up there.
Here's your button.
Because they're, you know, when you say comprehensive plan, they're not going to have the tools and then the, the background information in order to make it a comprehensive plan. Because comprehensive plan involves understanding, you know, the resources, the allocation of those res, a lot, I, I think.
It might be misperceived when all we're trying to do is make sure that we get all the data.
Yeah.
But we'll have all the data, so.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Raizak, give me that bullet point.
I, since recommendations is up on the top, we just have, upon completion of this process, this group should make recommendations by no later than July regarding the improvement of Indian Prairie School District. I, I, two doesn't make sense anymore. So take that out.
So put it's three.
And probably three doesn't make sense either.
It's within.
Well, did you leave it above?
We took it out of the above, so I think we need it down there.
So we can leave it in there. So is it the development?
Yeah. Yes.
Or could we took it out?
The out of the first one.
We took it out, up, up there with the idea that that's what.
Because we still want that.
We want that.
Just take the, yeah, take, can we just take the the out of the first bullet?
Yeah, I think the second bullet is fine.
Are we good?
I like it.
They can't do a plan, but they can do a model. I'm, I'm next, Al.
I'm glad we did a workshop too. Can I go to executive session?
I'll make a motion recess, recess into executive session. For the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Litigation or action against affecting or behalf of a particular public body has been filed, is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding should be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Raizak?
Aye.
Ms. Don Hugh?
Aye.
Ms. Pio?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Mr. Raizak?
Aye.
I ask everybody to take your blue folder with them, please.